Seven o'clock, I'd like to welcome everyone to the August meeting of Green Castle Council. If we could all rise, would you please leave?
Welcome to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone, I apologize that I'm switching into the sunlight here coming through our skylights. Just that time of year. Melanie, welcome, can you call and roll?
Yes, Mayor Dory.
Here.
Councilor Hammer. Councilor Thomas.
Here.
Councilor Harvey.
Here.
Councilor Langdon.
Here.
Councilor Tucker.
Here.
Councilor Eckert.
Here.
And Councilor Murray.
Here.
Thank you.
We have two public petitions and comments, so I'd like to call forward Andrea Young and Deionne Jackson from DePaul University. They're here this evening to give an update on the recently received Lilly Grant project. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, I am Andrea Young. I am the Vice President for Finance and Administration at DePaul. I live in Cody's Ward. My son just started second grade at Red Pass, so we are proud members of the Green Castle community and of the DePaul community.
And I'm Deionne Jackson, and I've shared with Mayor Dory, it's been about a year since I've been into a city council meeting. Those who know me know I work for the mayor of my hometown, and so we had city council meetings every week, and so I took a break from attending city council meetings since moving to Green Castle. I'm a proud member of Ward 1. We have an eighth grader who attends Green Castle Middle School. She's an active volleyball player and trumpet player, and I'm pleased to be here. I serve as Vice President for Institutional Equity at DePaul.
And we wanted to come and give some updates to you all formally about our Lilly College and Community Collaboration Grant. In early spring, DePaul received a $250,000 planning grant through the College and Community Collaboration Initiative. This was part of the Phase 1 of this project that Lilly is funding, and the Phase 1 planning grants will allow us to then apply for up to $25 million in the spring to support infrastructure projects within the city of Green Castle. The key is the college and community collaboration piece. Successful projects will need to and must benefit the whole, and we're really taking that directive very, very seriously. We've formed a leadership team. Mayor Dory is on it, Lori is on it. We have the Superintendent of Green Castle Schools, Jeff Gibbony on it, and we have the Executive Director of the Putnam County Community, Putnam County Community Foundation, Nisa Meyer, on the leadership team as well. So we've been meeting and active, and Deionne will share where we're at right now.
So one of the first things that we decided to do in our first meeting in May was to break up into two working groups through the summer, and so we spent time, Andrea leading the RFP team and searching for an urban planning firm, and I spent time leading the community engagement team in developing a plan for how we will effectively engage our Putnam County and Green Castle community. As far as community engagement is concerned, where we are is in fact that we developed a plan, and our first engagement activity was actually the Putnam County Community Foundation survey, and I hope that many of you had an opportunity to engage in that. Nisa has been great about incorporating this, we did our feedback on the survey, and we plan to use the results of the survey report in order to inform us of the needs of our community. Secondly, as far as communications, this meeting was the first one on our plan to attend to provide an update, and we have a map from now through November of places we will show up to provide ongoing updates throughout our time together. Also, Andrea will share more about the firm that has been hired through a competitive bidding process to do development, but we are partnering with them to do some engagement as it relates to forums in our community, interviews with community members, and the like. We will have our first open community engagement opportunity in late August, and we will publicize when and where that will occur to our community.
So the main deliverable from this grant project is a master plan of sorts particularly targeting the region, we're calling it the DePaul-Green Castle corridor, so that those several series of blocks between DePaul's campus and downtown Green Castle, but it will likely have a little bit broader scope as well. We're really focused on housing as being a critical need for everybody in the city, recreation opportunities, education opportunities, and aesthetics. So really trying to comprehensively and collaboratively develop a plan that will allow us all to enhance our ability to recruit employees, to have people choose to live and work and play and love in Green Castle. And so the firm, we are working with AP Development out of Brownsburg, Brownsburg, Indiana, as well. They are our main planning team. They're supported by Delk Design, MKSK, and the Veritas Group. So they will be working together, as Deionne said, to engage the community and to do master plans. So we wanted to come to first share that feedback and indicate that we will be regularly releasing communications and coming to many of you to provide stakeholder input, and would appreciate any questions or comments that you might have.
When is your proposal due for the Lilly Endowment?
The proposal is due in March, so our goal is to have this master planning initiative finished by the end of the calendar year. That gives us all some time to consider what the grant proposal will look like and to get that written.
You said up to 25 million?
Mm-hmm.
That caught my attention.
Yep, yeah.
Matching funds required, skin in the game, next thing.
Yes, wonderful question, yes. So the 25 million can make up, any funds they give us can make up to 30% of the project. So if we apply for a whole 25 million, that would mean that we're looking at an $80 million project. So a big piece of what we're doing with this master planning work is figuring out how can we actually generate the capital that would be needed for the matching portion, whether it's through leveraging developers or using private investors, existing funds, how do we do that? That's actually probably the most significant piece of what we're trying to do.
And you said infrastructure, so housing, recreation. Has transportation been in the conversation at all? Is that something that perhaps your group would look at?
Absolutely, and I would encourage folks, you know, we sort of have some general parameters that we're thinking about, but we're genuinely open and seeking community feedback as we're shaping this. So please share with us directly, come to the sessions that we're hosting. I think we are going to try to engage city council as a group to meet with the planning team, if you're open to that, and opportunities to really give that feedback.
Very open to that.
Great.
What are the parameters that you're thinking about?
So the things we were thinking, are thinking about is housing, recreation, aesthetics, and education, but that doesn't mean that that has to be the boundary.
And I should note that the premise of our proposal for the planning grant was around workforce and emphasizing what it takes to attract workforce here and have workforce members live here. That was the big premise of our proposal.
Well, I think with the Stellar Foundation of Stellar and some other things the community's done, from what I can tell, talking to a few other people, everybody's been pretty tight-lipped about this around the state, but from what I can tell, we've, you know, we're ahead of the game because of the foundation work that's been done, so hopefully that will bode well as things evolve over the coming months and result in some success with the Lilly Endowment.
To look forward to your invitation to that meeting.
Great.
To talk about all this.
Great.
All I've heard is DePaul and Green Castle. We're not talking county?
So I think, and again, our ideas cannot evolve, certainly. I think our initial thought is even though 80 million is a big dollar amount, when you're talking about transformative projects, 80 million doesn't actually go all that far. So I think for the purposes, well, construction is expensive these days, you know, so I think we are starting our scope really focused on Green Castle. Doesn't mean that that couldn't expand, or that this is the first step in a more comprehensive vision for the county.
Certainly, we're making use of some of county planning stuff and several things like that.
And I said, oh, lots of things going on, including this, that have to do with, you know, county plan, that kind of thing.
Okay, well, thank you so much for your time, and we look forward to sharing more with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Great.
Next on our public petitions and comments is Lisa Zeiner with the Putnam County Plan Commission, and she is going to quiz everybody if you read that entire document since yesterday, so there will be a test at the end here.
I'm going to correct first of all.
I just wanted that.
Today I'm not here on behalf of the County Plan Commission. Today I am here on behalf of the Putnam County Emergency Management Agency as the Deputy EMA Director. So we currently have a multi-hazard mitigation plan that is going to be expiring at the end of this year, or, and I guess, it has expired, so every five years we have to do a new plan. This is that new plan for 2023. It is all about hazard mitigation for anything from wildfires, tornadoes, severe weather, whether that's extreme cold, extreme heat, drought, flooding, all of those things, and how the county as a whole mitigates, and to help the citizens not have so much of a burden when those things happen, and then also how to recover from when those things happen. The county, the town of Ambridge, Cloverdale, Rocheville, and Russellville have already all approved this plan. It is currently with FEMA and the state to review for that, so this is just the last step is to get your guys' approval on that. I will attempt to answer any questions. It sounds like y'all haven't read it, so if you would like, 155 pages, I could just start.
So our thought was, was have Lisa introduce it, say a few words about it this evening, and then allow you a month to kind of review it, and then she has a simple resolution that will put on your agenda for next month.
Also, I will tell you, the county wasn't the only ones that looked at this plan, so the mayors looked at it, Scott Zimmerman's looked at it, several other employees of the city have looked at it, including fire, EMS, police, those, everybody went into helping develop this plan. It just wasn't a county thing. We did do a grant for this, but our match is timed, so I do have a sign and sheet. Everybody here counts towards that, so I will pass this around. If y'all just sign, you just have to put your name, title, role if you have one. If you don't, just put citizen or county resident, something like that. So if you could fill that out for me, that would go towards our match to help with that. Any other, so any questions, sorry.
How does the new plan differ from the old plan, or is it very similar?
It is very similar. I think a few things that were added into this plan was like active shooter-type incidences, and also public health pandemics or vectors that happened. Yeah, those were the two things that were added to this plan.
I was going to ask about public warning systems, so are there any upgrades or anything like that that's either coming or that you see that we have a need for, any gaps?
Yes. And all of that is listed in one of the appendices that talks about all of the, it talks about the hazards, what the mitigation type is, the goal and objective, and the action to meet that goal or objective, and then who's responsible for that, and then what grants are funded or taken. So all of that is listed in that document. It starts, you're more interested in looking at that specifically, it starts on page 120.
Lisa, I had a chance to, I will use the word raise, the document yesterday when I first received it, and I'm curious whether there were any significant changes with respect to the sort of risk levels that each community within Putnam County. For example, I believe that were low for earthquakes, and Cloverdale is higher. Are there any significant changes in between comparatively? I know this probably put me on the spot.
Only because I didn't participate in the development of the previous one, because I wasn't in the position that I was in, so I can't honestly answer that question. I can say that there have been a lot of things that have happened in the last few years that maybe didn't happen when that current plan was drafted, so I would say, yes, there are probably some risks that have gone either up or down depending on. The one I can think of mostly would probably be flooding, because as creeks and rivers change course, more people are then could have flooding issues.
And the nature of residential developments change as well.
Right, yeah. So all of those things could factor into that, yeah.
Of course, thank you.
You were asking about earthquake. It's interesting, Cloverdale falls into an area of the state that requires earthquake-proof construction, but our part of the county is not in that zone, so we don't have to file that same construction standard.
Any other questions from the board or the council? I don't know.
If they read in public has a question.
If they else have questions, or... It is public record, so if anybody does want a copy of it, just reach out to me and I can get that to you. Okay, thank you for your time.
You know, if anybody needs to call Lisa, we can provide her contact information if you have any follow-on questions or anything like that. I'll do it. Thank you, Lisa.
Sure.
Next, we have five special requests, first mostly for street closures. The first one is for the Putnam County Chamber and Main Street Green Castle. This is for Halloween on the square. Russell, are you going to cover this for Main Street?
Yeah, I'll pull that. Yeah, so we're looking to close the streets, so pretty much the same footprint as for First Friday, for Halloween, so we can do trick-or-treating on the square. So that would go over Grand Street from just the 231 down to Vine Street, and then I want to kind of amend that if I can, because right now it's Indiana Street, and we're looking at just, we were looking at just the block just right there on Courthouse Square, but we'd actually like to extend that down just past the fire department and be able to include the next, that block, and then just past the fire department. So I know they usually participate, and there's a lot of businesses over there, so we can do that. And the idea is to, there's already businesses there, but to also reach out to other community members, businesses, organizations, anybody that wants to participate, and also kind of come down there, set up a table or a chair or whatever, and pass out candy. And so the idea in that is that helps keep it a little more contained. Previously, we were crossing, you know, so crossing Washington Street there, and then crossing 231 and a couple of spots on the other side, so at least that will eliminate crossing on the side of 231. We'll say that Washington Street we'll have to cross, and so we will lean on Green Castle Police Department and see if we can get some help with that, but then otherwise, it's just side street crossings, and we'll be able to hopefully create a pretty big event. We want to do some cool things and have some, have some music out there and have, just make it a whole event versus just, you know, going door-to-door and getting some candy or whatever.
Are you dressed up?
You know what, I am going to dress up. I don't know what is, I don't know, I don't know the word yet, but I am. And that's actually one of the things, we hope that those that participate will dress up and business owners and all of that, so we can decorate some shops in the street and get some folks out there. So I heard that Dave Warrick is dressing up too, and he's going to come up there, so that's true.
Good luck with that.
So anyway, so, so yeah, so with that, I'm up for any questions or anything that anybody has for that.
All right, have any questions?
I think John does. John, I guess.
John, Mayor, in the past, maybe you said, I hear, we've always closed Walnut Street too from Jackson up to Vine.
I want to change the Jackson.
The line gets so long that it goes all the way down the sidewalk by the post office.
Across Walnut Street there from National Fire Department, we've always closed Walnut Street for that area too, so.
Okay, I am, if it is okay to add that, I would be just fine with closing that and keeping that safety there, so.
You're comfortable with that addition? You've been in the past with the additional closure with respect to egress from the fire department south?
Yeah, because we could go out to the south.
Okay, very good.
With that in mind, I'd be happy to move to approve the street closure request with the amendments requested by Chief Burgess regarding Walnut, or Jackson and.
Second. We have a motion of second by Veronica and Cody. Any further questions? Hearing none, please indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is one of our own. As you know, we sponsor the farmer's market, and we contract with the Chamber to operate that, and with the Green Castle Music Fest coming up, I've been working with Madison Hannah to relocate the farmer's market on that Saturday of August 26th, so we're looking at putting most everybody in the Jackson Street parking lot, and then if there was overflow, maybe on Indiana from Washington to Walnut, it looks like we're going to have enough electric capacity in the parking lot that we should be able to keep everybody there, but didn't want to have that extra just in case. So this is just a one-saturday relocation of the farmer's market. Move the street closure.
I'll second that.
We have a motion of second to approve. Are there any further questions? Hearing none, please indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is A and B Plumbing. Mr. Montgomery is here. If you want to step forward and explain your request, they need to do some repair work on Indiana Street, and as we kind of talked about what they were going to do, we felt it might be safer just to go ahead and close the street instead of trying to run traffic by. So go ahead.
So yeah, we just need to close the street down in Indiana in front of Scoops. There are water lines leaking, so we have to bring a back truck in to be able to go through the sidewalk, so the back truck's going to take up majority of the road. Like you were saying, it is tight right in that area because it's just past those parking spots that are right there where the back truck went to park. So yeah, I mean, closing the whole road would probably be a little bit of a safer bet because it's already going to be a tight squeeze on the other side of the back truck there. We'll be closing it. Our goal's just for a couple hours, really, all the back trucks there, and once it's done, it'll be open after that. We won't be closed anymore.
What's the timing on the closure?
As far as when we want to close it, you're saying, so we're planning on starting the 21st, 22nd is what we're planning on doing the project on 22nd. So it would be first thing in the morning, we get there, close it down, and hopefully by lunch, as long as everything goes smooth, although by lunchtime we'll have the darkness reopened.
Move the street closure.
Second.
We have a motion of second to allow for the water service repair at Scoops Ice Cream on Indiana Street. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, please indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a request by Putnam County Conference Services. Andrew Rank is here for the Green Light Arts Festival. So this is in regard, is an add-on to the farmer's market.
And for First Friday.
Okay.
We have the stars align finally for our festival, and we're going to do this downtown in conjunction with First Friday and with farmer's market, but we have now 40 artists coming, and we need a little more space, which is a good problem to have. So we would like to extend Friday night's closure, that's normally for First Friday, all the way past Lost Hollow down to College, to have that extra block for staging and potential overflow of vendors if possible. And then on Saturday morning, taking what's normally shut down in Indiana, Scoops, the same block, and having that on, closed off on Saturday morning as well, so farmer's market can extend in that direction, so we can certainly have a lot of their space Saturday morning. This is a great, great collaboration. I'm going to be excited in my final year here to finally pull this off. So look forward to your approval on that, and I'll take any questions that you have about it. Russell's been great help in all this, by the way, so just applaud your vote a little.
Drinking half alcohol at the cement, so no one has.
Yes.
Okay, good, excellent.
Others mic for First Friday, and others mic for farmer's. I don't think farmer's market's being alcoholized, but that's theirs, that's theirs for all I want. Yeah.
I'm looking to approve the street closure as presented.
I will second that.
Okay, discussion, though.
Go ahead.
Any issues with the bank, we'd be blocking their driveway?
Just the backside, they all stopped the side on, they all stopped the side.
And EMC?
We, they have, they have another interest they can come into, but I work with Persians who actually owns that building, so they know what is going on. I do not talk directly with EMC.
Who is the second? Russell. We have a motion of second to approve the street closure request from Conference Services. Any further questions? Hearing none, please indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Personal, thank you all, the city of Green Castle. Citizens of Green Castle for being so kind in the last almost 10 years, and I really hope the relationship with PCCF and the city continues in my absence. Thank you.
Mr. Andrews' last meeting was us.
Maybe. You might have to be out here faster.
You're always welcome to come back and answer. You're always welcome to come back.
As a fall employee, a citizen like to have many reasons to come back.
Good, good. Okay, next we have a request from DePaul University, Joe Harris. Good to see you again for Center for Diversity and Inclusion.
Hello, everyone. My name is Joseph Harris. I'm Assistant Director for the Justin Darian Christian Center for Diversity and Inclusion. On August 24th, we'll be holding a welcome-back block party from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM. It'll be right in front of the center, and we're requesting to have a street closure on Hannah Street, just between Indiana and Jackson, so it'll be a very small footprint. For this block party, we'll be having food, games, a DJ. The DJ will be facing their music towards the interior of the university, not towards the out, and they will stop strictly at 10:00 PM, so that's our request.
Did you know all the questions we were going to ask?
I tried to answer that.
Let me take your view. Is this, so is this something like the community can contribute also? I mean, I know you may not push out large scale or whatever, but.
Yeah, one of them is that we are working with a couple of community partners. They're going to be tailing, so really it's the introduction to our students, is letting them know some of the services that we provide, but also some of the services that are offered in the community, so we're having some vendors and some of the stores from the community come down and tail as well. So a little bit of a collaboration here.
Awesome.
I move the street closure.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the street closure request for the Center for Diversity and Inclusion. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll see you again. We'll be back for another school year. Okay, next, uh, we have department reports and we have several of our department heads are here this evening. If there's any, any questions that might arise?
Scott? In your report, you, you mentioned the town of Rochedale and their planning commission now being what, part of, or whatever the arrangement is as far as the county and city planning conglomerate. What's that mean to us?
Sure. I've put together a few notes. Um, Indiana Code allows municipalities with a comprehensive plan and plan commission to have zoning or land use jurisdiction in an area approximately two miles around the city limits. Since community growth usually tends toward an outward trajectory, makes sense for the standards inside city limits to be the same as the areas where growth will happen. However, when, and again, this is by Indiana Code, when the county planning agency becomes an area plan commission, uh, by virtue of handling planning for municipality, and in this case, Russellville and Rochedale, all municipalities lose their opportunity to oversee zoning standards outside their city limits. Now, in our case however, the Public County Planning Office has been working with our planning office to adopt standards for the area around Greencastle that conforms closely to current standards as possible. Also have these that are with us tonight if there are some additional questions. Now, we point out that this can be a benefit particularly for the community in that we won't have the, the traditional, well, first you go to the city and you work out, you know, your site plan and your, your land use. And oh, now you go to the county to get your building permits and they handle the inspections and everything. That will all be under the county handling and therefore verifying what those site development plans are, land uses, et cetera. But as I mentioned, we're working to make sure that our standards that we had in place for the two mile fringe can be as easily transitioned as possible. A lot of that land, um, that is in kind of development area, you might say, a lot of that is zoned agriculture. Uh, to promote the type of residential development that we might want to expect, um, more than likely, we end up being rezoned to a residential zoning anyway. Not that you cannot build houses in some of this human egg district. So I think I've just suddenly started getting a little more detailed than.
The lots?
Yeah.
So did, did Rochedale have a two mile fringe? The only, we're the only one that is impacted by that.
At one time Culverdale had a two mile fringe, but um, there was a disagreement between the town and Culverdale and the county and the county took over the two mile fringe.
I remember that.
So we, we will lose some authority in two mile fringe. Ultimately, though, the city, you know, if somebody's going to develop a, a nice project that's going to have some density to it, they're going to want city water and city sewer. And in the past, for the most part, uh, the philosophy has been if you want city water and particularly city sewer, that you have to be annexed into the city. So we, we do lose some immediate control, but the city does have the issue of, you know, negotiating utilities and things like that.
And I, I will simply say that I, I really enjoy working at least uh, on those two mile fringe areas and being part of the county's steering committee for the comprehensive plan and they're going to find help.
Thank you.
Bottom line is, we don't have a choice there.
Look, well, I. I just never thought of the combination.
Greg, can you go first for that?
Kudos to you and your staff. I have a six-year-old grandson in town and we spent, I don't know how much time over there, but I had a chance to go from water slide to water slide to diving board. And as you know, the guards rotate. So it was a time to have a conversation about who they were, where they were from. And it was a really good summer. Now, Mother Nature certainly helped, but I just wanted to know this, the staff was somewhat beat by comparison to previous years that, you probably know that, but I want to say that publicly. And I also wonder what the latest is on the lights out of the sports bar.
Well, first of all, all the credit with regard to the aquatics center goes to the management staff over there. I had little anything to do with it. I, I went over there like you and admired the operation. Uh, every time I went over there, I was just amazed at the way that the lifeguards and the staff went about their business. It was, it's, I, I, I would, I would single this out as one of the more, um, one of the better operations within this part of the state, maybe statewide, where they've done a great job. And Krista and Matt and, and the other staff members were just terrific. So thank you.
It was great. They have, you know, you got that five-minute break and they're all gathered in the break room. And I took the time to go in and say, look, you know, thank you so much for what you're doing.
Right. And I, and I know they appreciate that. They would like to hear that. And, but it's warranted. They deserved it. Krista and I were talking today, looking at next year's calendar. This year, we were open for 10 weeks. We think we might squeeze 11 weeks out of the facility next year. A lot of it has to do with the epidemic calendar, uh, which we don't have yet. But we're hoping maybe we might get 11 weeks out of the facility this year, which would be terrific.
So you sent people on the local school board to delay a school for a year?
Terrific. I don't know who you're referring to. I, I think we're moving on to some specific information. Uh, I know we, we had a couple of firms that were interested in guiding us.
We're gonna try to get some quotes from the engineering department.
But that, I mean, that, that, that project is, is going to move forward. Um, and once we're ready to start, uh, I would imagine it will be, um, it won't take very long and, and we're going to light up the sky out there if they will all know. And um, that's really what we need to do. It's, it's going to be great.
Greg, can you give us an update on the bathrooms and the ban shell at Roban?
Yes. Um, we met yesterday with regard to Roban and the bathrooms. Uh, the bathrooms are going to be renovated prior to the rest of Phase Two. Um, and we're moving forward on that, um, basically, you know, as I, as I sit here and talk about it. So, um, I, I would imagine, I don't have a date or a timeline or anything, but I would imagine by the end of September, maybe in October, the bathrooms will be fully renovated.
They've moved already and we've already awarded them a grant.
Right. And we've made, we've, um, we've made a couple of adjustments to that. Um, but uh, I think it's, it's going to be a, a facility that, as much as you can be proud of a bathroom.
So you can be prouder.
I am excited. Uh, the ban shell, I haven't spoken with Mark Scott recently, so I don't know where we sit.
We, we exchanged emails because I was trying to catch up with him as well. He was out of the country, but he said he's back on it, so.
Yeah, he's, he's in and out of the country a lot, which, you know, I'm jealous of that. But it's, um, you know, but we're, we're making progress. Well, Phase Two itself is um, moving forward. Uh, I think it's going to be terrific when it's finished. Uh, once Phase Two is done, Roban's just going to have a completely new look to it. It's going to be safer. Uh, it's going to be ADA compliant. Um, and you know, I'm really, really excited with, with um, what Align Engineering has done for the project. And um, it, it may not happen as soon as we had hoped, which uh, really isn't that big a deal based on the timing. You know, the, the critical issue with me is that it's ready for spring 2024. Uh, we don't really, you know, a lot of the improvements aren't overly affected in, in the winter time, things like that. Um, but uh, as long as it's completed before Memorial Day, celebrate for that type of thing, pool opening, um, which I, I know it will be, it's, it's going to be terrific. I think it's going to be a, a project you're all going to be very, very proud of.
Awesome. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Greg. Hey, you want to say anything about signup for fall softball or anything? You might, or?
We've got 12 teams playing the second session of our summer league. We had a second rainout of the year last night. Uh, Mother Nature got us. Uh, the first rainout was an exhibition game, so it didn't really have any effect. Uh, we will have a fall session. Uh, this, the summer session will end um, the week of Labor Day, and we will have a, a tournament for both provisions. And then we'll start a fall league that will get us to about mid-November. Um, and then we'll do it all in next spring. So, but it's been terrific. We've got 12 teams right now and I've got four or five teams that are, are people that are reaching out wanting to join, join the, uh, the league in the fall. So.
So for those watching at home, if you want to organize a fall team, just give Greg a call.
Right. And in essence, if we do delay the construction of Phase Two, it, that would have had an adverse effect on softball because of the areas of the park that are going to be affected. So it may be a blessing in disguise that we, uh, that we delay the, the construction part of Phase Two, the main construction. Thank you very much. Please.
Any other questions?
I have, I have one more.
Sure.
Chief Jones, you don't have to come all the way up, just listen. You know, three weeks ago, I had a personal, personal family experience here in town. My daughter, granddaughter in town for some medical visits. And between the three of us, we did a number of things in town and finally decided to go out to eat. And at the intersection at the armory, uh, the vehicle we were in died. Right in the middle of the intersection. Busiest intersection in town at noon. And fortunately, we had some people come and help us pull, push my veh- my daughter's vehicle out of, out of the intersection. And Officer Eastham showed up and asked if we needed any help. And he directed the traffic. And Officer McDaniel showed up and he took care of my granddaughter who was in the back, back seat scared to death about what was going on. And he called a wrecker for us. And in a half an hour, we were all well taken care of. So kudos to those two gentlemen.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll pass that on.
Chris, can you come up for a second?
Yeah.
We live right near the intersection of Bloomington, 231 and Seminary Street. And we've seen more than one tractor trailer going down 231 on Bloomington Street. My wife was going north on 231 and a tractor trailer was coming south. She and two other vehicles had to get out of the way and make a turn onto a side street. And we had seen multiple tractor trailers ignoring the signs out by Veterans Highway, you know, going north anyhow, even though they're not supposed to. Uh, my wife observed one tractor trailer coming off one of the side streets. The tractor trailer driver got out and moved cones away. And it was somebody on staff that came by and saw this happen and put the cones back in place. Um, do we have any recourse with people who are ignoring that advice, that request?
Um, well, we deal with people. There's issues and then we can take appropriate action. Um, a lot of the truckers, we're finding out, are following their GPS and not paying attention to the signage, which I still can't understand because you can't miss it. But unfortunately, sometimes there's a language barrier with some of the drivers and things like that. They're just, they're just glued to the GPS. And it's been an ongoing problem. It has been. And we've got officers in those areas that monitor the traffic and we're doing what we can, but with the delays and different things, it's just been an ongoing problem that, you know, we're going to have to deal with for, for the future.
Is that something you can issue a ticket for? Is there any recourse?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep. Yep. And I think we have issued a few.
It's just obviously you say to you, when you've got this tractor trailer coming dead on that chicken.
Yeah, we had, we've had an accident there too. And it's, it's been a concern.
Unfortunately, it's not just tractor trailers.
Yeah.
Cars and trucks.
Yeah. The cars are a little harder to catch.
Yeah.
We, we have brought this issue to NDOT's attention on multiple occasions. Um, and we've asked them to check on the traffic control devices at least once a day because we find people are moving them or, uh, people are being kind of smart alecky and go by with their trucks and just knock off the cones or knock down the one-way sign. So we have, we have brought this to their attention on multiple occasions.
Whatever you can do, it ensures public safety. That's all I can say.
Yeah, it's a primary focus of our guy.
Thank you.
And Chief, thanks for your advice. And I was going to answer my, I have an email not sent or given issue. Thank you for prompt response. I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Is there a department have a question? I will mention, uh, our fire department along with a, a number of other, uh, emergency responders were recognized by the Department of Homeland Security last week and, uh, for the group effort out at Firm Cliff with the rescue there. So a lot of hard work by a lot of folks, uh, making that a successful outcome for the individual. So. Well, with that, department heads are dismissed and I don't think we've got anything else on the agenda for, for that. So everybody have a good evening. Um, moving on to your other reports. Um, also like to thank Duke Energy for a gift of $17,500. $10,000 of that will help with uh, some of the recovery after the storm. And then $7,500 will go to the fire department and uh, that's to help support uh, uh, after the response of the storm. I think John's going to use that to help uh, make some improvements out at the training center. And uh, also, I forgot to mention this, but I would like to thank our departments. Uh, if anybody made it out to National Light Out, it was a great evening and a lot of participation from across the county. And uh, a lot of our departments participated. Uh, on the YMCA project, dirt work continues on the site. Uh, with yesterday's rain, we had about an inch and a half of rain. We, we lucked out compared to some other parts of the, of the state, but uh, uh, so not a lot of work today, but they were still working out there. Friday, uh, tomorrow, work starts on the detention areas. And the dirt that's to come out of the detention areas is going to be used to help build up the building pad. Uh, so that work will start tomorrow. And then on Monday, they'll be doing some testing of the first, what they call a first lift of the building pad. And then they will do some additional proof roll and testing of the south parking area. So uh, they're, they've been out there for about the last week or so, uh, pushing a lot of dirt. If anybody would like to go out there after hours, I do have a key to the gate. You have to show you a lot of dirt moving around. Uh, the Alpon Waterline Project should be complete sometime in early September. They're currently switching over people on the services and uh, uh, they're moving along reasonably well with that. Uh, unfortunately, on the US 231 project, I don't have any new news other than the fact that um, the cost estimates for all the additional work were provided to NDOT on August 9th. NDOT is reviewing the change orders and uh, because of the significant cost of this change order, uh, there are some uh, extra approvals required by NDOT. So hopefully, they keep assuring me that that is moved, they'll try to move that forward as quickly as possible. I know the contractor wants to get moving as well. Uh, the Chip and Seal Project by NDOT, south of town, should be done. The roads open. There's some striping work, I think, finishing up. Uh, on the 240 project, travel lanes are- On the 240 project, travel lanes have been repaved, they're doing shoulder work out there, but traffic is flowing. Locust Street, we're moving south, I sent an email out to everybody with some detailed information, and Eric, I'll get you a press release maybe for early next week on that. But if the weather cooperates, that project is looking at a completion date of roughly September 15th. But we are still going to continue our civic redecorating. Our community crossings projects will start shortly here later this month, early next month. Primarily, the first project will be Poplar Street from Locust all the way to Madison, and some of that work will be full-depth reconstruction, others will just be mill and overlay. The work won't be quite as extensive as Locust Street because we don't have any storm range or underground utilities, most of the curb and sidewalk has stayed in place, so it's really just a pavement. Then we'll move on to other, other projects involved in that are Madison Street from Poplar to Washington, and then Washington Franklin, Garden Side, which is a simple mill and overlay, Hammond Street mill and overlay, and Ohio Street, part of that mill and overlay. Our sidewalk projects will probably get started next week as well, there are scattered sites around the community, so that's, that's working. And I mentioned last month that we hired Ron Price, and this is a project being funded through our ARPA dollars for small business assistance, and we pay Indiana State for this, so the first bill for that is in the claims this evening. They've already had one workshop, I, when he signed on, I encouraged him to try to get some of our local contractors interested in doing INDOT work and potentially work for us in the future, and he had about 12, I think, companies show up and people show up for us. Did a very nice presentation over at DePaul on that. And INDOT, apparently this is the first time somebody's done this around the state, and INDOT was pretty pleased when they sent four people out to help provide the assistance. So hopefully it helps us as well in the future with more bidders on our public works projects. We, sometime later this summer, will be doing utility relocation on North Jackson Street. That schedule is somewhat up in the air because we have to coordinate with the railroad, and we're waiting on the railroad on that one. Sherwood List Station project, as soon as the materials come in for that, that'll get started to do that, that's only been on our books for some 20 years or so, so caught up on that, and they'll be replacing that force made as well. So a lot of work going on around town. We do appreciate the public's patience with us, I know there's been some criticism on social media that seems like everything's torn up, and there were a couple of projects that we weren't aware of, like the Chip and Seal on 231, that just kind of showed up, but as I mentioned to people, some of those that INDOT is doing, it's nice to have INDOT spending some money in this part of the state, and particularly in our communities, so lots of things going on, again, we do appreciate everybody's patience.
Bill, what's the timing? I'm trying to remember, Richard, Matt, Mel, and Montiel, and thank you for that, on all the construction, so when does the Seminary and Locust Street intersection shut down? I hope it's after opening day at DePaul.
They, yeah, we've, we've been alerting the contractors on all these projects to big events going on, and so they will, the intersection will actually be closed during the day, August 14th through the 18th, but they're going to reopen it at night, and then they will have an open for move-in day at DePaul, August 19th through 20th, so, and then after that, they'll remove the pavement so that they can come in and replace the pavement in that intersection, so. Anything more from Linda or from your office?
Yes, so with the Dunbar, City Cook Treasurer has worked with Kenny DePass at Republic Services, and our Fall Heavy Trash Day will be Saturday, September 30th, at Republic Services from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon, and it's free to everyone that's a city utility customer, and we will be mailing letters out again, so.
I've given my report.
Yeah, I don't have anything to report necessarily, but I, but I did want to comment on, on something. A few weeks ago, also on social media, somebody had commented that they were moving to Greencastle and was kind of asking, you know, what's it, what's it like, and what's there to do, and things like that, and honestly, I was a little heartbroken at a lot of the responses. I know that social media can breed negativity, so I, so I didn't put a whole lot of stock in it, but it did say kind of funny with me because I think some of that is also, it does show maybe public perception or whatever to some degree, and, and so, you know, some of these are, oh, there's nothing to do, and yada, yada, whatever. Strangely enough, the, the one thing that kept coming up was, was there's nothing to do but farm work, and something else, but that kind of struck me weird, but anyways, I'm bringing that up because I think that those type of things are important to know, and I think as city leaders, I think it's, I think we, we need to know that, and, you know, try to, you know, reach out or, you know, tamp that down as much as we can. I did reach out to the lady, she moved to Texas, or reached out to her, just sent her a message and, and kind of shared my story, I'm also somebody who moved here, you know, nearly a couple decades ago and all that, but, but I also want to say publicly that if, if there's somebody who, you don't know what to do, or you're not, you want to get involved, you're not involved, you're on call. I wouldn't say that, I don't think so, I think that, I mean, I think that sometimes it's hard to know what to do, or where to go, or what's going on, there's a lot of avenues that we share, information and all of that, but, but there's a, there's, there's a council here and people in City Hall that you can reach out to, and so if, if you feel like there's nothing to do, or you're worried, you're wondering what to get involved in, then reach out to, to some of us, I definitely want to hear from you and see, and we can get you plugged in, but, but there's, there's a whole council here, like I said, and City Hall, and there's other organizations and things like that, so I just wanted to say that publicly, that one, it's not a good look for somebody moving to the, to the city, but also, reach out to us because we can get you plugged in, and there's a lot of fun things to do going around, going on around here, and so there's people that can point you in that direction too, so, so if it may be there, fall, I don't know, whatever, then now you, you have a, you have an excuse, you have a, you have a reason to reach out, and so reach out to us and we'll help you find some stuff for you. That's it.
Russell, put together a softball team.
Yeah. Curse it, is that a, is that a club for a city council softball team? For the fall league?
I have nothing to know.
Yeah, everybody else stole my thunder with everything else that I did, so before, I don't have a whole lot to say. Thank you for saying what you said, Russell, and I think especially for all of us who are leaders of the community, who are pastors, for good day for this, so let's keep that up.
Just a thank you to Jason Keeney, liaise with the cemetery this summer, that went well. Jason Keeney's a great tour, before your, remember, your terms expire, highly recommend you get out there and get the Jason Keeney tour, because the documentation is really cool, the layout of the cemetery and the history behind it's really neat, you can see all the famous button counting aids with the wheels and the zonika stuff out there. Very cool, highly recommended, thanks to Jason.
Any update on the wellness center agreement with the hospital?
It's been worked out.
We're working on it.
Been working on it for eight years.
Well, we're working on it nowadays, and you know where we are, and you know what we're doing, and we're working on it, and we've, I've been staying in contact with the hospital, we've been talking with the hospital redevelopment and outside council, all the relevant parties to the, to the agreement, and we're very close, and we're making great progress.
Good, I was not aware of any of that, so thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Approval of minutes is our next item on the agenda, and these are the minutes from the July 13th session, so entertain a motion, if there's any additions or corrections.
I'm able to approve the minutes?
See.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions?
Aye.
Next is approval of city claims, Dave, did you get the claims?
I do. We have direct payables of $191,933.77. The larger one is Co-Alliance, $20,965.86. Keeners and Aller Sales, $11,560.76. Usual Republic Services large charge of $42,735.39. Align Engineering, three invoices totaling $41,515.74. Locust Street is the largest of those, Roban and Campus Link are the other two. Bonavita, the architecture firm, $81.01.16. Mark Cutser, Jackson Street Appraisals, $8,450. And then the controversial KNS Engineering expenditure, $29,016 on the Y project. Common Council Claims, another line civil engineering for $17,372.50. We've got turnout beer for four members of the fire department at $13,266.42. Coix Construction, this is the final payment for Phase One at Roban Park, $90,523.3. And then Indiana State University, a check from the mayor's office for $13,340 for small business technical assistance, I think this is what you were referring to.
Yeah, that's from workshop.
Yep, and the total on, on the common council claims is $179,148.30. I don't have the city employee or the retirement contributions, so.
They are coming around.
Yes, okay. I'll move that they be approved.
Yeah, just go for the purposes of public, why don't you pass those down to Dave, and then he'll send them back for signature, so he can read the last couple of the packet.
Pension contributions of $18,508.98, and with that, I move the claims be approved.
Second?
Motion, a second, to approve the claims, are there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, please indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any abstentions? Okay. Okay, we have two items of additional business, I would ask your indulgence if we could maybe do the date for Halloween before we talk about stormwater utility. Halloween is on a Tuesday evening, we saw earlier that they're going to do the trick and treating downtown from 5:00 to 7:00, and I apologize, I meant to look up what we approved last year, but I think it was like 6:00 to 8:00. And is that, is that a reasonable, does somebody want to make a motion?
It was 5:00 to 8:00.
What's that?
It was 5:00 to 8:00.
I think it is 5:00 to 8:00.
If we do it 5:00 to 8:00, okay, sorry, I didn't get a chance to look it up.
I'll make a note that we have Halloween on Halloween, on 5:00 to 8:00.
On 31st.
On 2nd, state's motion.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, to make the door-to-door trick-or-treat hours from 5:00 to 8:00 on Tuesday, Halloween evening.
Does anyone have any questions?
Any further questions or discussion? Please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstain? Lori will let us know what the family costumes are for the year.
Yeah, last year we didn't do any, people thought I was in the hospital or something.
Next, we, I'd like to take a little bit of time to look at the, you know, we had work session on the rate options for stormwater, and we'd like to get some guidance from council as to what rate they'd like us to focus in on, and then we can go and, you know, have some public meetings and some meetings with some of the larger potential rate payers. So I put together a summary chart so that we can maybe focus our efforts. You might recall from last time that we looked at four different rates, the first one being a, a $5 monthly rate per EDU or ERU, which is equivalent residential unit, and that rate would increase by 25 cents per year, up to a rate of $6. Then we also looked at a rate of $6 increasing by 25 cents to 7, and a flat rate of 6, and a flat rate of 7. So I kind of outlined those four options here, so the rate is the first line in each of the boxes, the second line is the estimated income based on an estimated number of ERUs of $12,300, and then broke that down based on the budgets that were kind of discussed roughly, you know, in the first year, for example, for the $5 rate, about 400-some-thousand would be available for kind of general operations, street sweeping, cleaning drains, et cetera, et cetera, and then 325,000 would be available for large capital improvements, so like a major storm sewer project or something like that. There is some small-scale capital money built into the operating side, but that was more like, you know, changing out a cash base, or maybe some minor curb work or something like that. And then, I think Linda mentioned this last time, I, I put together kind of a rough estimate that, of what we're currently paying for in the general fund, or, or motor vehicle highway, that would be replaced by this, so roughly about 300,000 that first year, so that's the, that's the fourth line in each of the boxes. So obviously, if the rate is a little higher, it generates a little more money, but that's a greater impact on our citizens, and, you know, again, you know, we've got some, some big landowners that are going to feel this from a rate standpoint. So for example, on the $5 rate, each of us as a household, that'd be $5 a month extra on our utility bill. So for business, it's going to vary a little bit depending on how much acreage they have, how much impervial surface, you know, a small business, it might be 5 or 10, a larger business, it might be 25, 30, one of our major businesses, it could be several thousand. So once, once we narrow down the rate, we'll run some calculations and be able to pass that out to you so you can get a feel for the impact, so. Open the floor for thoughts and discussion.
Okay, refresh my memory, our lead ring town already charged a stormwater utility bill, we're one of the few that do that, right?
Yeah, I think Fillmore, I didn't bring the list down, but I think Fillmore, Cloverdale are ones that have them, you know, we, we have that list from across the state of similar sized communities, and there's, there's quite a few that have moved in this direction.
I understand the need for putting this in place because of our drainage issues and the projects we have coming up, but my, my personal lean would be, let's start with the $5, you know, as low as possible to impact our people that live here and their water bills, that's, that's my opinion.
We've been fortunate that we've, you know, we've... We've been fortunate that, you know, we've used some of that money for some stormwater projects. And then with these community crossings projects, Endot will pay for stormwater work related to road work. So we may be able to leverage those dollars, and that can continue with this utility. Some of the capital money might be used to match a future community crossings grant and leverage those dollars.
Did we get some grant money a year or two ago to offset some increases we were planning to do for?
For water system, that's the Almpont. And likewise, that Okra funding source can also be used. They do provide for stormwater projects under that program. So that could be a future opportunity where this funding source could leverage those dollars as well.
Bill, when do you say the monthly hit for a residential place would be?
Typical single-family residence would be $5 if we start at the $5 rate.
$5 a month.
Yeah.
Okay, we heard the community foundation hasn't come out with its survey, but I'm anticipating the number one need is going to be housing.
Yeah.
And you heard DePaul say that tonight. The first thing out of their comments was housing. And these numbers are a drop in the bucket when it comes to what might have to happen from a city point of view. And I'd rather see us go to the $7 rate and have money that we have some flexibility to use. $7 more a month is not catastrophic for most households.
Yeah. I guess my only counterargument to that would be, is at least it isn't my expectation, but my expectation ends on December 31st, that this money would be necessarily used to subsidize a developer potentially. That this money is going to be used to repair our existing problems in some of our neighborhoods. And we need to, you know, we need to be thinking about the folks that may have a little less resources than others.
I'd be more inclined to support Stacy. Her thoughts about the motion, just because we can start at five, but there's nothing. I think we could probably all anticipate that this will get up there in the next council year where increases inevitably happen, due to inflation, due to other factors. So I think we're probably getting there at some point, but there's no harm in starting the low potential option.
And we just ran this five years out. There's nothing to say that, you know, if, for example, we start at five and increase to a quarter every year, we just keep going another four years and get it to seven.
I think that, yeah, so I would probably be more inclined to go with what Dave's saying, somewhere in the six or $7 range. And in thinking about that, I certainly understand the impact that it can have. But I also think we can say with some degree of confidence that it's already very expensive to do the things that we're doing, and it's not going to get cheaper, right? And so I think there's also frustration for folks that, you know, you get the increase, then it increases next year. And I understand that we're trying to get to, I understand, you know, we can always get there. But I think also, trying to be good stewards and make sure that we have those funds available for things that we know cost is going to grow on. It feels like now might be a good time to do that. And then, and just hopefully, it's a set it and forget it type of thing. So, I mean, I guess the difference, we're talking about a buck or two. And I know, because I've been in, I've been in that situation where you feel like you don't have two dimes to rub together. But that $2 stretch also, I think it can happen. I also think that it just benefits the city overall. So that would be my two cents. I mean, if it's above the seven, I would go for the six for sure. I wouldn't even the five.
But to that point, we've never had it before, and we've always been creative and found other ways to find the money to do these projects.
Sure.
So that's why I think we start.
No, I agree, but I also think that our citizens would say they don't want us to govern on a hope and a prayer that we find money later, right? I mean, I think that, and I'm sure they would also say that they don't, you know, nobody's going to be happy to give it up, right? I mean, I'm not saying I'm happy to give it up, but I'm saying we also, you are exactly right, and we always have. I think that there will be ways that we can do that. But I don't think it's, I don't think it's the best way to operate off of, I hope we can in the future.
I recognize Stacy's point that we need to get our foot in the door to get the grant, opportunities for grant money. That's a huge part of establishing the stormwater utility in the first place, irrespective of grade. I'm inclined to sort of meet in the middle. I'd like to think about a $6 rate, even whether or not we go with a sliding thing baked into tonight's proposal. I just don't want to walk out of this room tonight without having established the utility. That is the, and launching this plan off the ground, because that's the most important thing right now, so that we can begin to pursue these grants. Because we have, we've already identified many stormwater needs in the community, and there are more that are, that I've not seen on lists that I'm aware of, both through anecdotal evidence as well as direct evidence of driving my car down the street and making some fishtails. And I know that the avenues and areas of your first ward as well are particularly in dire need of these things. I'm really inclined to start in a place where we have the leverage to move swiftly to address the needs of our infrastructure that are so needed, because it is a public good that this community needs sooner rather than later.
Yeah. Well, I was just going to say, I'll just say this, too. I think that in addition to, you know, things increasing year to year, I think it's very rare also that we go into a project and everything's like, oh, here's the plan. Okay, we started and we finished the plan, right? There's always, you know, something weird or unforeseen or whatever that happens in these things, too. And so just, you know, I'll just do it that.
That's exactly. You know, emergencies, we get more and more unfunded mandates from the state government about MS4 storm sewer. And the fact of the matter is, most, many, many, many communities in Indiana have had this for 20 years. When we looked at doing it 20 years ago, we looked at $2 to $5 20 years ago. And, yeah, we're just starting, but we shouldn't have done this. I mean, this should be, we're behind a lot of other communities in this regard. And we are an MS4 community, so.
And the figures here are based on, what, $12,300 ERUs?
Yeah.
And I would think there would be the hope that that number would increase, that?
Yeah, for example, if somebody, there's a, like, if there's a vacant lot in some area, it's counted as a, it's like a fraction of an ERU. When that person builds a house there, then it's a full ERU. So that would, you know, add to that $12,300.
So any other kinds of projects that we've talked about or in the future or whatever that might come about?
Well, two good examples are the new apartment project, that would add to that town.
That was in my mind.
The Duke Energy project that's being built behind the Walmart would add to that. Our own Y adds to that. So, yeah, I mean, that number is going to go up over time, too.
What will this do to our schools and our churches?
Well, that's why I'd like you guys to give me a rate to focus in on.
Tonight? You want one tonight?
I would like, it would be very helpful if you guys could narrow it down to one rate, and then we can run some calculations. You know, we have scheduled with our consultants some public outreach meetings and things like that. But it's hard to go to the public and say, well, we're looking at a bunch of different rates. Let's give them a rate that we're going to focus in on, and then they can respond to it. You know, is that too high, too low, or, you know, are they comfortable with it, or, you know, whatever.
It would apply to schools and the churches. It's like an assessment. It's not tax, it's an assessment like your utility. And if we're going to institute this new drainage ordinance, it requires a lot more oversight by the city. And I don't know that you all understand how many complaints we get all the time about drainage on properties, in between properties, in between two property owners. And so this just requires even more time of engineering assessments, et cetera, review of plans, et cetera, that we're going to have to contract out because staff, well, because we'll need engineering and all sorts of other things. So if we're going to comply with the drainage law, then we're going to have to, I need to go.
I mean, the need is there. The need is there. I don't, there's no, I mean, there are staff issues, there's some maintenance issues that need to be done. You know, our public works department goes around and cleans the catch basins, we street the streets. And all that's part of the MS4 because we're responsible for both stormwater quality and quantity. So, you know, the reason we have on all of our catch bases, don't threaten the earth, to try to encourage people not to spill things in that would have an adverse impact on water quality. So we do have some, you know, mandatory statutory responsibilities with MS4, which we partner with DePaul. And, you know, this is going to be a chunk of change for DePaul. He's really our largest landowner in the city.
I was going to mention, it is a bit of a double-edged sword. Yes, this impacts our schools. Yes, this impacts our churches in the community. But, you know, for the very fact that DePaul has been able to, you know, along with those churches and schools, flex a tax incentive status in the community, this is one way to recoup some, put some skin in the game for helping to pay their way with respect to stormwater in our communities. And, you know, if there's a way to, obviously, we're not talking about, obviously, we know that, that both churches and schools and the university are going to do what they can to pursue exemptions or whatever they're called to, credits, thank you, against some of the assessment. Everybody's going to be paying something. And it's definitely.
As a county seat community, we have a lot of property that is taxes-mapped, government-owned, you know, that we're still providing services, you know, police, fire, stormwater. You know, at least this is quote-unquote utility, that we can, you know, recover some of that cost anyway.
Thanks, Ron. I think that's important. And Lori, thanks for your comments, too.
Well, we can beat this till the cows come home. I would move that we establish a stormwater utility rate of $6, increasing by 25 cents per year to $7 over the course of five years. Is that the wording we want?
Well, you're not, you're not yet establishing a utility. You're recommending that we bring that rate forward, and then there's a whole bunch of stuff that goes in the actual ordinance.
And we'll have public hearing on it, and, yeah, you'll have a whole lot more coming towards it.
So you're not doing fine adoption today. That's the recommendation for, to move forward with that rate.
That's a motion to get something started.
We have a motion and second to focus in on the $6 rate with an annual increase of 25 cents per year going to $7. And we have a motion and second on that. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, please indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
And again.
Opposed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have any opposed?
No. Two opposed.
Two opposed? Okay. Well, this gives us a start. There will be, you know, further review, you know, there may be a further change, but we can spend time focusing on this rate. And then, you know, there will be a chance to, when the ordinance comes forward for adoption, to make some adjustments or stay with what we've studied.
So we're not playing?
You're not locked into it yet. I just want, you know, I could spend a lot of time doing all four of these. I want to kind of focus in, and then that helps us explain it to the public a little better. Okay, thank you very much. That concludes our business for the evening. So I'll take a motion for adjournment.
I so moved.
I have one question. Duke Energy, I know, is going to do some trick training. Have we gotten a more updated schedule? Give any idea of their timeline when they come to the table? I know they sent letters to some residents.
Yeah, they are currently in town now. They're, in fact, the team from the street department said they were on Powell Street today. I noticed they were over by TZ.
I guess it's happening.
So it's happening.
Good.
Cutting down a bunch of them.
They have their trucks still providing the old marsh going at night.
Actually, this received a message, surely something about them coming to my neighborhood.
So we have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor, so you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.